All right, I'd like to call this Thursday, January 25th, special school committee business meeting to order. Mrs. Yalbuk, take the roll, please.
Me, Rihanna.
I'm here.
Sarah Hall.
Yes.
Andrew Wolberg.
Here.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Brianna Higgins.
Here.
Kathleen Shaw.
Here.
Julie at Walker.
Present.
All right. Let's see. Let's go over to the start. Enjoy it. I've got a nice sign right there. All right. Go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is anyone here for public comment? Is there anything on that?
Sure.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the review of the NSDAQ hiring process.
Where would you like me to talk?
You want to do a little podium?
Yeah.
Where's the owl? We're trying to...
The owl will fall.
Hey, if you're not at the podium thing, it'd be good.
Right here, that is the podium.
If you want to use them, use them.
Should I get my violin out? Okay, all right.
Does that work okay for you?
Yeah, no, it's fine. It's fine.
Going to be raised at all or?
It's okay. I'm not that tall. It's fine. Okay, so my role tonight is to give a complete overview from beginning to end of the NSDAQ process for the Director of Pupils Services position. So I'm going to go back to the beginning. Okay, I'm going to start back in the fall. We met with our NSDAQ consultants and they kind of outlined what our plan would be. Moving forward from that, NSDAQ facilitated community forums with our community, with staff, with administration, and with parents to design, along with feedback from a survey, to design the candidate profile of what Newbury Public Schools community was looking for in their next Director of Pupils Services. The next thing that happened after that was there was a screening committee that was created and met to choose from a pool of seven candidates who we would move forward for the first round of interviews with that screening committee. So from that screening committee and the seven candidates that applied, they moved forward four candidates that they wanted to interview. Of those four candidates, there were three that ended up being interviewed because one of them, the day before the interviews, removed himself from consideration for the position. So the next thing that happened is there was a first round of interviews for those three candidates, and that was of the screening committee, which was comprised of parents, members of the community, staff from the schools, administration from the schools, and two members of the school committee. One who had been a previous school committee member, which was Bruce Menon, and the second one was Kathleen Shaw, who was brought in after she was nominated and elected. So Bruce kind of moved to a position of a community member at that point. From that screening committee, two candidates were moved forward for the next round of interviews. That was Bradley Brooks and Christina Ryan. So those were the two candidates that were moved forward. Then there was a second round of interviews, and that second round of interviews, which was also made up of administrators, school committee members, Walker and Hall, and the administrative assistant to the Director of Pupils Services and administrators from the district. In that first round of interviews with that group, at the conclusion of it, there was a straw poll that was done, and from that, four of those committee members voted for Bradley Brooks and two of those committee members voted for Christina Ryan as their first choice. So four for Bradley Brooks and two for Christina Ryan. So subsequent to that, the next step in the process is that was when there was the school visit. So each of the candidates had an opportunity to tour the district. They spent a day here. And the day for each of the candidates concluded with an interview and a community forum where they were interviewed by a panel of staff, including, again, administrators. And in this one, on the last round of interviews, it was Ms. Higgins that was the school committee representative. So the community forum consisted of questions that were submitted by the community and then asked to the staff, or excuse me, asked to the candidates for them to answer. At the conclusion of the interview round for that interview, which was the third round of interviews with independent interview committees, Mr. Bradley Brooks was unanimously chosen by all six members of the committee to be the top choice in that third round of interviews. So then what happened and what was kind of happening behind the scenes while these interviews were taking place is there was professional vetting that was taking place. And what that means is that both NSDAQ, our consultant with NSDAQ, who we partnered through the whole process with. So Dr. Palladino was actually calling contacts and calling references that were provided by both of the candidates, as well as reaching out to people that may have worked with them that may not necessarily have been listed as contacts. And the report that we got back from Dr. Palladino was that there were no red flags professionally for either of the candidates, that they both had references that were validated and, again, no red flag. So in the interim, what happened is the district actually received a number of emails and there was some social media information that was posted. So there was another level of vetting that was done in relation to that. And the way that that vetting was handled is that every person that reached out directly to the district, either via your email for school committee or directly to me, was contacted to discuss why they were, you know, what their concerns were. So I spoke to over 15 people, including the two advocates that had reached out to us and the parent from the neighboring community. I had a conversation with her a couple of days ago. So I did speak to all of those people. And then in response to that, Mr. Brooks had asked that because there was that feedback being provided, could he have other parents' contacts? So there were a number of parents from his current district that actually reached out to me to say that they would be happy to speak on behalf of Mr. Brooks. So I also spoke to all of those parents. So for the last three or four days, that's pretty much what I've been doing, is talking, talking, talking. So there's been a lot of talking. In addition, some of the vetting that took place is Ms. O'Connor, our current interim Director of Special Education, researched and reviewed any PRS complaints or BSEA claims that were present for either of the candidates. She also reviewed the coordinated review information for Mr. Brooks because as he is the director, that is his responsibility. So she looked at his coordinated review information that's been submitted to the state to see if there were any red flags. Again, there were no red flags found. The last piece, I think, is it's important to note that one of the people that I especially asked to speak with from the current district was the CPAC Chair to find out what the dynamic was in relationship there. So I did speak with her yesterday. I do have to throw out that she was actually a lunch lady. She has children in school. She works in the cafeteria, so I had to thank her for that. But so I spoke to her and asked what the relationship was and what the dynamic was with the CPAC. And she indicated that they had good relationship, that there were sometimes communication problems, but she couldn't specifically state if that was as a result of the school or Bradley Brooks, but she did actually have a very good working relationship and felt their CPAC was effective. So that deeper level of vetting was done on one of the candidates because by all accounts, we were not getting the kind of feedback regarding the other candidate that we worked with him. As a result of all of that, it was found that there were no significant red flags. So as a result, that takes us through to the process of where we end today. So that is what I have done and what we have done with our NSDAQ consultants starting from beginning to end. What questions does anybody have? This might be the last I talk for a couple of days. Yes.
And I can just follow up. Is all the work that Ms. Keely has done in vetting, in NSDAQ, also being a superintendent, having many connections. Myself, I also did our own personal vetting for both candidates, but it really encouraged Ms. Keely for all of the follow-up on some of the social media posts that were posted. So to really do our homework and to look into all of that. So at this point, we feel we vetted both candidates very, very well. And I think that for a couple more candidates, go with the contract negotiations. But on the process itself, I'm not sure if you have questions.
Just for the record, because you mentioned you spoke with the CPAC Chair, I presume that the superintendent was also contacted?
I spoke, I've actually... Brad Morgan is the superintendent at the district where Mr. Brooks currently works. I've actually spoken to him three times, including at 3:00 today just to finalize any questions that I had on my own line. So yes, I spoke to the superintendent. I spoke to an assistant superintendent in neighboring community that had worked with him. I spoke with a principal in their school who had worked with him both as a director and also for an interim during COVID. Mr. Brooks had filled in a principal's role when one of the principals was out. So yes, I did, I spoke with the superintendent multiple times. You're welcome.
Question about the community forum. Was there any mechanism for people present to provide feedback? I know we talked about that and I couldn't really remember what we landed on.
There was not...
Did you hear you or?
I mean, anyone, of course, could have emailed me. There wasn't anything formally in place to collect that feedback.
Did you suggest that people could reach out?
So what I did say at the forum was anybody who's welcome to contact me.
Okay.
That I did not have a formal mechanism in place for feedback. That question actually came up at the forum by a staff member who asked, and I said, "There's not anything formal in place, but certainly if anybody has feedback that they would like to give me, they can."
And did you hear from people? Did you?
No.
Okay.
No.
Is it appropriate to ask what the ultimate deciding criteria is, why you're excited about the candidate?
Yeah, I mean, so where... I think there's a few things throughout the entire process.
Can I ask, Julie, are we talking about each specific candidate or the process? Because I think everyone has a conversation about each candidate under that identity. When we get to that point, right now, we're just talking about the process.
Thank you, that's what I was asking. It's appropriate.
Yes. Well, I'm just asking if we could keep that separate for clarity.
Correct, yeah. Does anyone have a question about the process? Everyone?
Let me make a comment because I think it's to the revolver's question. I was part of the process in one of the interviews and what I do appreciate in the criteria that you're looking for was the candidate profile. And so we developed that candidate profile, really as a community, taking all the community feedback in the survey, developed that profile. And then what I did appreciate at the end of the interview was Ms. Keely read through the all the criteria and qualifications that the community that they were looking for in an individual before asking us to rank our choices. So as part of the process, I think that that profile wasn't just a job description that goes online and it didn't actually come off as a profile.
Anyone else with questions or thoughts?
Yeah, just one tricky. The forum that took place, do you have a guess minute of like how many parents or community members participated?
I would say maybe 20. I mean, you were there. I would say about 20 people were at the forum.
Okay.
Yeah. The most overwhelming response that we got within the creation of the candidate profile that Brianna spoke of, that was the most responsive we saw was to the survey. So we did offer in-person throughout the process for people to come to each step of the process, but we really got the most information from that survey to develop the candidate profile. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll hear from superintendent. All right. As I said, a very comprehensive process. If you want to post me the thing, this is the audio. Can capture better.
We're just standing at the podium.
Standing at the podium thing. I won't have to raise either. Get lower. No. Based on the thorough process and the vetting and, as Dr. Higgins said, looking at the candidate profile, evaluate from the screening committee to the interview committee, the second interview committee, third interview committee, you know, where like to move Mr. Brooks forward, the contract negotiations with this guy. I'll just kind of now go back to the kind of or just, you know, what makes you excited about the candidate? You know, again, most of us were in that process, so. I think what there was, I think a few things through the interviews and the feedback from the faculty and the direct, the team chair that he's going to be working with. I think his experience, you know, being a director, being in the position, having the ability to talk about the tiered monitoring, review for the district, him doing multiple budgets. He was a director of a collaborative for years. He's also the director in his district, talking to the superintendent about what he's done of creating programs. He's very approachable, supporting the teachers, giving advice. And the number one thing that, you know, he really prides himself on is following a team process and allowing that team process to come to the conclusions of the decisions. The one piece, as we reflect on the hires that we've had in the past, this is the first time, other than Dev O'Connor, this is the first time that we have a sitting director as a top candidate. The former directors I've worked with that, you know, when I first got here, and the people that we hired were assistant directors, which is great. But I think it's, when you're looking at hiring, it's a time and place and the right fit at the right time. I think with some of the changeover that we had, I have a good feel that Mr. Brooks will be here. He has the experience and part of our restructuring down the road. We're going to have, you know, for us, is people that he can mentor that can fulfill that role. So I think from all of the work that the committee has done and all of the work that I have done, I think he's the right fit at the right time and exactly what we need. And from his interviews on what he, how he deals with, you know, the parents, the community, what I heard in the interviews and then from listening to the multiple parents in his district, it was the same story. And some of the parents in his district that gave us the stories of how he, you know, brought them in, walked them through, added district placement, walked them through some serious situations with that family and those parents saying that he was always there for them, always bringing them in, working them through some really difficult situations. And it was just really good to hear. So I think for us, this would be the first time moving forward of having a director that has multiple years of experience. Well, questions? I have another question. Can you speak at all to, and again, part of the process, sorry, all that. But, you know, what did you hear from him that he was just starting to express like about how he's excited for the job? And if he's already a director, what was his... How did he talk about likewise, people want to make this deal to him? So I think for, but when you're in a regional, I think there's two things that was very attractive to Newbury Public. I think number one, he actually got to come in and see the school. But when you're in a regional director or a regional superintendent, you have three different communities and three different school committees. So I think what he really likes is the size of our district, a little bit smaller, and he likes having, you know, one school committee, one city, and one community. So it's hard to, as he was talking about, being part of the community coming into a school system when you have three different communities, it's really hard to get involved. The other piece that I, that came out and some of the school community, maybe you've heard that story, was, as we all know, of the teacher shortage that's happening now. And some of our new teachers that are coming into the system, he gave a few stories on how he really supports them at the ground level. So if they're having difficult times or they're experiencing some difficulties, he really prides himself in working with them and then taking on some of those challenges, you know, so they can just focus on the instruction and focus on the kids, which was really good to hear. The other piece is from talking to the assistant superintendent and the superintendent out there. He's a hands-on person. Superintendent said that he's always calling parents, always having meetings. So difficult cases or difficult situations, he's always willing to sit down with everybody. So he's very hands-on, you know, and the one... You know, there was just so many positive scenarios that I just really think he would fit very well within this district. We have, I think Dev has done a great job. We have great team chairs. We have great special education teachers. And I just think he would be able to elevate, I think, all of us through his experience. And then on the business side, Ms., with Mr. Little Hale, he's done multiple budgets, very familiar with circle break-up, very familiar with Medicaid. So the whole business side of the Special Education Department is also a lot of expertise and experience that he brings.
This is a bit, just again, for some clarity in the record because Ms. Keely was referring to the last vote, a lot of six, I believe. Do you have confidence that your staff, you mentioned the team chairs? What degree of unanimity do you see in support of your choice?
So that, I mean, part of the whole process, and I think the last interview was probably the most important because what we did is we brought in the union president, we brought in the team chairs, we brought in the people within the school system that Mr. Brooks will be directly working with. And so they got to ask a lot of questions. They got to ask a lot of follow-ups. And they were unanimously in favor. They felt very comfortable, excited. They liked the experience because they could ask, you know, technical questions that really involve special ed in some of the situations. And they asked, "If you had this situation, how would you handle it?" So when you have the experience, you don't, you're not making up scenarios. He could say, "Oh, I had this experience and this is how I handled it." Or "I went through, this is how I handled it." For mediation, PRS, all of those things, you know, he answered those solid with experience. And I think that really made our team chairs very comfortable.
Excellent, thank you. It's great to hear that there's better support for the staff.
Yes, yeah.
So if he were to accept the position, what would be sort of the plan bringing him on under this somewhat of a cloud?
Yeah, I think...
And, you know, what would that look like? Who, you know, what would your part be? What would be in part or, you know, this bed department?
Yeah.
In terms of working with parents and that.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think part of, part of the whole transition plan, you know, and it ties back to, I think, his leadership skill set where he is going to be meeting with parents. And I think that, you know, for us, as part of the transition plan in, we would have like, you know, community forums and have, you know, discussions that introduce the candidate. And then, you know, they, our community and our parents would get to know him. Very similar to like an entry plan that, you know, that I did, almost asking people, you know, what are the strengths of the department? You know, what are the challenges? Where do you see us going? I think that's really important. And during his interviews, there were some questions asked, like, "What would you start with?" And that's what he said. You know, getting out, getting to know the programs, getting to know the staff. But I think he's really excited about getting to know the community. As I said, being in a collaborative, also being in a regional, it's really difficult to immerse into the community itself. So that also came out in his interviews. So I think, you know, once, if the contract negotiations, everything works out well, I could foresee him start to transition sooner and not necessarily wait. I think he's excited and I think he really wants to be here. Yes.
I'd like to make a couple of comments that are not necessarily... So one is, I was lucky enough to be part of interviewing him or to share with the rest of the group as well than even looking at home. I was able to interview both candidates and talk a little bit about why I was excited about him as a candidate first, that I feel he's going to be very proactive. He has a lot of experience because of that skill to be proactive in building relationships with people, dealing with problems or challenges. He has a great deal of experience, kind of a toolkit to draw from. I can give specific examples of this challenge arose, this is how I handle it, or when I see this coming, this is what I'm putting in place. But more things turn into a larger challenge or crisis. He knows exactly what he's looking for, what it places him by. He talked a lot about team building and building the process, but that was very important to him, with families as well as the teachers. So if he has an instructional strategy or a particular plan for a student or parents need services for their, or want regular services for their students, and the team isn't agreeing, then we're not, we're not walking away from that table until we can all build the process. That's what we're all working towards. Sometimes the director does need to make a particular call, but it will only be after a whole lot of success has happened. So I appreciate that, that as a group, he will take not only the parents but with his staff as well. And I think that will help build buy-in so that there's a wonderful staff here will follow him. He also talked about younger staff and newer people coming into the profession and how he is proactively setting things in place, not only professional development, but systems that can support those people so they can be successful in their jobs. He described his position as someone that needs to create the conditions for our students to be successful. So if the staff are supported, if they have the right training, if they know what it is they're supposed to be doing, he's creating that environment, then students thrive. He talked about how he goes into classrooms frequently because he wants to get to know students. They're not just the names on the paper. Every single day, he could be walking around the building, getting to know the students, saying why popping into class. So I also really appreciated that, that, again, they're not just needs or numbers, and again, to know the students. So and also an important initiative he would like to bring here if it is needed. He's very clear that he wants to get to our community first because a lot of mental health support and how trauma and hard instruction and mental health is something that is hugely needed in districts all across the country, particularly in the last year. And he's like several really important initiatives into place that will train all teachers in trauma and hard instruction, how to wreck that trauma in kids. So I appreciate that as something that he can bring to our district. So having done all of that, I just wanted the community to know that although there might be, you know, things swirling about him, I understand that. I listened to the community, I understand what's out there. And I was able to interview him, just how I felt about this particular candidate that I am really excited about. Lastly, I see this as a reciprocal relationship between the district and our community, particularly our parents with disabilities. And so, you know, what we're asking from the community is to hopefully, if he accepts, welcome this person into our community and give him a chance to get to know you, to get to know your children, get to know our district. give him the chance to get to know you, to get to know your children, get to know our district and to offer his experience and perspective here. But I think what we're asking from the district fairly is, is more than that, right? We're asking them to be welcoming, but what, what do we need from the district? And I think that from the district, we need really a renewed commitment in this kind of new phase to the special ed department. So listening to parents, helping to families, what has the district learned from this whole process, speaking with parents, you know, listening throughout several years of kind of disability? What have we and how are we going to kind of turn over a new program with a new director? And so, so if we're going to ask the community to kind of trust us and welcome this person, what's the district going to give back? And so I hope that's going to be, you know, greater communication, continue to develop the programming that we know is important, a renewed commitment to listen to our family and hear what's brought to their needs. And to just continue to collect data, not just our test scores, but observational data, like what's going on in our classrooms, how are families feeling about the district and respond.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last question.
Just, should we, questions or discussion?
Are we going to make the motion?
Uh, sure, we can do that. Would anyone like to make a motion to move on superintendent's final recommendation? I guess the motion is that we're moving Superintendent Gallagher to enter a contract negotiations.
A second?
Second, okay.
So that you're approving his recommendation?
To move to contract negotiations. And this is, yeah, I'm going to do a roll call.
Need a discussion first?
Oh, discussion.
Um, who did that? So Juliette was the second.
No, I made the motion and Juliette, that's the second.
Discussion.
Yes, thank you for the thorough explanation of the process, very much appreciated, Ms. Keeley and superintendent. And it's wonderful to hear you have so much confidence in the candidate, it's really reassuring. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I think it's important for the committee, along with the Siggin's suggestions about renewed interest in the special education, that we continue to commit a lot of energy in that direction ourselves. And also just from a process standpoint, that maybe we have a future discussion about whether in these processes we're actually adhering to our own policies and state guidelines as closely as possible so that lines of communication aren't purely ad hoc. For instance, and not to be cryptic, the Siggin's sort of explanation, I would not have known about. And I think we would have had an opportunity to ourselves facilitate the community buy-in that's going to be necessary and that will all be part of going forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I appreciate everybody's comments as well and I appreciate being a part of the process. I think, you know, I really do see our role as making sure that the process is fair and equitable and addresses both the community issues and concerns that have been raised, but also brings, you know, that the candidates are perfectly vetted and, and I think our staff was very responsive to that request. So many of us asked for that, we knew there was a out of level concern in the community. I also had a very positive impression of Mr. Brooks in the interview process. I think from my perspective, being maybe more of a layperson when it comes to this topic, I was impressed by, but being somebody who's been part of hiring processes for people at his level, I really appreciated the depth of levels of experience that he's bringing. But he's been a classroom instructor, he's been a principal, he's been an administrator, he has personal experience as a parent. I think all of those things inform someone at his level of who will be managing many people with many different backgrounds and many different skill sets. And that is really important for us in our district to move forward in a positive way, to have somebody you can draw from personal experience professionally and. So that really made me feel confident about this. I think candidates can present in different ways, in different environments. And I think ultimately, the way we did this, where we got a lot of different perspectives and were able to pass a number of different questions at different stages in the process was really helpful. I think we always have room for improvement in the process and I really appreciate Ms. Keeley's role in this, as well as superintendent. But I do think, you know, we can think back on this process, if we go forward with other hiring processes and think about, maybe from the get-go, we lay out our objectives and maybe have something to do with the group. But having Nestec part of this is really important, you know, they're professionals, they, very good community at the little vetting. We probably got a caliber of candidates that wouldn't have gotten without their involvement and I'm very pleased by that. So, yeah, I do, I do think overall that we have confidence in this.
Yeah, so I will say, I will also be supporting the recommendation. I just wanted to touch on something you said, Michelle, about the cloud over this. Since the names of the finalists were released, unfortunately, no fault of anyone here, the process, I think, got a little bit, little bit muddled. And like my only concern is that I don't feel we have the community buy-in that I would have liked for this decision. And just for us to be cognizant of that and thinking about how, how we'll manage that. You know, I love the idea of having some, you mentioned community forums, maybe it's even like a coffee or something, you meet and greets. Because I think we do have a good candidate here, but I also know that I've been hearing from parents who don't feel that way. And, and I really want them to be, to be on board. And I think we should make that extra effort to do that.
Okay.
Oh, I was, can I just, I'm going to tag on that, you know, I'm just kind of thinking, like, to get out not just with parents, caregivers, guardians, but be part of, you know, kind of joining in the community. He doesn't know the community and I think in a lot of ways, that is some times that, you know, that could be a challenge for some folks, you know, because every community is unique. But, you know, something about him maybe getting to the commission for, on disabilities, you know, you know, getting on the agenda and being able to visit there or, you know, other different groups, organizations in town relevant to a spread director. I just think it's going to be, it's the hour for that part because it's just going to be, unfortunately, because of the situation. And so, those would just be, for my ideas, so I'm going forward, you know. Welcome him along, I will make the brownie, you know, it's all good.
You can tag along with me and we'll go to HRC first.
HRC, exactly, but, you know, I think that those are the, you know,
Yeah.
Introducing him to people through ARC and all of the other more local groups, this neck of the woods. Pretty crucial and also so that he, that's where he's going to meet some parents, there are mentors that, you know, can help him along as well in his community.
I think that's us too, right? Like, I mean, it's not just him, I mean, again, he's getting chosen for this, so, I mean, I don't think as much as he has the PR problem and we need to support him and, and help him, you know, hopefully he can be successful, and send him up for success. And we have a great community together, so there's ways to engage the work and see. I just wanted to say one thing, I just, I just close to Ms. Keeley and Mr. Gallagher for not letting something like this like scare us away from a really good candidate, right? And this is coming from someone who takes a beating quite a bit on social media and other forums too. And I know what I signed up for, so I'm not complaining about that, but, you know, there's always two sides of the story and and it's a, it's a sensitive job. So, I mean, I appreciate the extra vetting and, again, partnering with PESDA and things like that. But, you know, I know that was probably a lot of extra work, but it was, I know, and instead, we're excited. I like, you know, empowering you to build your team and great, great people and that's sort of things I love about my job most is to spark people. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yeah, I want to do a roll call for this, please.
Mary Riordan?
Yes.
Sarah Hall?
Yes.
Andrew Boger?
Yes.
Ryan Callahan?
Yes.
Brianna Higgins?
Yes.
Kathleen Shaw?
Yes.
Juliette Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. All right, so now we will be going into a choose ones of phones.
No, I just want to thank the committee, I want to once again thank Ms. Keeley, our entire school committee and school community. You know, it's, as we said, this, we started this process back in October. And I just think it was a great team effort and I agree with the mayor, I think we did, we had two great candidates. I want to thank, you know, Nestec and I agree with Ms. Walker, if we didn't have Nestec, I'm not sure if we would have got the candidates that we got. This, this position, a director of special education, is a really tough position to fill, especially with high caliber quality candidates. So, no, I, I agree, we'll be working on a communication and we'll get the ball rolling, so. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so we will now go into an executive session and not returning for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations, possible litigation, people matters. Can we be in open session, especially on a week ticket?
Mary Riordan?
Yes.
Sarah Hall?
Yes.
Andrew Boger?
Yes.
Ryan Callahan?
Yes.
Brianna Higgins?
Yes.
Kathleen Shaw?
Yes.
Then Juliette Walker?
Yes.